Good evening and welcome to the June 24, 2025, meeting of the Marion County School Board. It's called to order at 5:38 PM. If you're joining us online or in the audience, we want to thank you. We had some technical difficulties before we began, so we're getting started a little bit late, but thank you for waiting on us. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Thrower. Would you read our board commitment statement?
Certainly. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. We will all, to work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received to the board clerk no matter, though later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet of paper. Good evening, Ms. Martinez-Yong. Will you please call roll?
Good evening. Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
This is Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
This is Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
This is Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Danielle Burey, Interim Superintendent.
Yeah.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Yong. Good evening, Dr. Brewer. Who's going to share our inspiration and lead the pledge for us this evening?
Thank you. Good evening. Area Superintendent Melissa Kinerd will introduce our special guest this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Conrad, board members, and interim superintendent Dr. Brewer. I have the pleasure of sharing with you Ms. Root, our instructional coach at Bellevue Middle School, and a few of our Bellevue Middle School students who participated in the recent Robo Fest World Championship. Seven student teams traveled to Lawrence Technological University in Detroit, Michigan, to compete amongst 20 countries from around the world. We are very proud of the accomplishments that Bellevue Middle School's robotics program has brought to Marion County public schools. At this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Root to you so that she may share the details of this amazing event.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Brewer and board members for having us tonight. During the last weeks of May, Bellevue Middle School and seven teams, as mentioned, consisting of 14 students, myself and their robotics instructor, Mr. Joseph Landrum, traveled to Lawrence Technical University to compete, as mentioned, with 20 different countries from around the world. Some of those countries included Jordan, Kenya, Ethiopia, Greece, Saudi Arabia, and much more. Robo Fest was hosted by Lawrence Technical University in Southfield, Michigan. It is a festival of competitions and events with autonomous robots encouraging students to have fun while learning STEM and computer science principles. Students can design, construct, and program the robots using any robotics kits and programming language. Robotics helps develop essential skills such as teamwork, leadership, creativity, communication, and problem solving, and ultimately preparing our students to excel in higher education and technological careers. With the tough competition this year being Bellevue's third year for attending this competition, we were able to bring home a third-place trophy for the sumo time trials that was won by one of our seven teams, the Robo Cats Panthers. Today, we have a few of our Bellevue students that attended the Robo Fest competition. At this time, I'd like to have them stand. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. We're super excited. Are you all going to start, lead the pledge for us? Dr. Brewer?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will you guys hang on for just a second? We'd love to come down and take a picture with you to celebrate this great accomplishment.
Here we go. One, two, three, couple more. And stay there, stay there.
We're celebrating her birthday. He actually came on his birthday. Want to admit whose birthday it is?
I know, but he's right in the middle.
Happy birthday!
He's like, yeah, thanks. I'm going to hurt that lady.
Thank you so much.
Laurie spends so much time with them. They do so many great things.
Okay, Dr. Brewer, I believe we have some special recognitions this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to introduce Kelly Brower. As she's walking to the podium, she is going to provide some information on the 24th Marion County Student Media Festival, and she's going to probably share with us some plans that already are in the making for the 25th year. So, Kelly Brower.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, School Board members, and interim superintendent Dr. Brewer. I'm here tonight to recognize the 24th Annual Student Media Festival. The award ceremony was held on April 11 here in the auditorium. The Marion County Student Media Festival is a star-studded event highlighting the outstanding video production work of our students. All of the video work, all of the storyboards, everything is student-created, so 100% student-driven. The purpose of this festival is to encourage students to communicate through media production. The festival also recognized the excellent work being done in our schools by student media producers. This year, over 300 entries were submitted from students in grades K through 12 at 19 different schools. Many of these Marion County entries have advanced to the state competition where we traditionally win many, many, many additional awards. For many, many years, we have gone to state and walked away very victorious. Our Marion County students have captured more awards than any other Florida school district in the state competition. Our Marion County Student Media Festival is completely funded by community sponsors, so we want to thank each and every sponsor, including Poisonalt Oncology Institute, the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, Cox, and Foliage Design Systems. Of course, it takes volunteers to make this festival happen. This year, we had more than three dozen local industry professionals view and score entries to determine category winners. Best of Show winners and winners for the Terry Hartley Effort in Media Education and Joel Hartley Achievement in Cinematography Awards. And we owe the top recognition to Merriam-Neatham, a longtime MCPS employee and media specialist who retired many years ago after founding this festival and securing an endowed sponsorship to guarantee it continues. Tonight, I also want to thank all of our CTE teachers and the media specialists who work with our students to teach the students about video production, assist them in capturing their video footage, and to get the video cemented, submit it with all of the required paperwork. It is, does require quite a bit of paperwork, on time. Many of our MCPS students have gone to work in a career where the video production skills have been an essential part of their job qualification. Some work in Hollywood, some work here in Ocala, some own their own production companies, others work for major networks and production studios. We tried to have some students and teachers here tonight to speak firsthand about their festival experiences, but summer travel schedules and other conflicts prevented that from happening. Summer time is hard, so we apologize for that. But I lastly want to recognize that the 25th anniversary of the Student Media Festival will be held on April 10, 2026. Plans are already underway for the upcoming celebration of the 25 years of student-led digital video production here in Marion County public schools. We're very excited about some of the things we have planned for the 25th anniversary, and of course, we hope everyone will be in attendance for those awards. Thank you so much.
Ms. Brower, thank you. I just want to say that's a project that's near and dear to my heart. My son is 30. He participated in kindergarten and first grade. Ms. Neatham was our media specialist. And so, what a great event. It's a great process. Thank you, Mr. Christian. It's a lot of work to put on. It just highlights one of the things that I love about Marion County public schools, and it's another way that we celebrate our students' success. And so, thank you for sharing with that with us this evening.
Thank you, guys, for having me.
Okay, moving on to the agenda. I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 24, 2025, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those, excuse me.
It's the superintendent's recommendation.
Oh, Dr. Brewer, you don't want me to read your lines? Sorry, Dr. Brewer, please begin.
Thank you. You're doing a great job. I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 24, 2025, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-26.1, D-26.2, D-26.3, D-26.4, D-26.5, D-26.6, D-26.7, D-26.8, D-26.9, D-26.10, D-26.11, D-26.12, D-26.13, D-26.14, D-26.15, D-26.16, D-26.17, D-26.18, and D-26.19 that have been placed under discussion regular agenda items. Also, items D-27.1 and C-22.2 has been pulled and placed under discussion pulled agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
No move.
Second. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Martinez-Yong, would you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting?
Notice for the June 24, 2024, school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on June 13, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached to board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 13, 2025, Board of Directors leasing corporation meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 13, 2025, school board meeting?
No move.
Second. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 22, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve the minutes for the work session?
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Board, next, will move on to informational items. The Central Warehouse awarded Pyramid Pager Company DBA Pyramid School Products, item number 13 through 20, in stripping bands, 3M Norton Ultra Blue 5 case and item number 61, sanitary liners, waxed paper, 500 count, on bid 4103AH, janitorial and sanitary paper supplies for Central Warehouse term contract. There's been an increase per case for item number 13 of $1.23, increasing the per-case price from $28.72 to $29.95 per case. In addition, item number 61 has a per-case increase of $3.62, increasing per-case from $18.19 to $21.81 per case. This concludes the informational items for today's meeting. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Can you please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Do we have any speakers tonight? Who've requested, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Martinez-Yong, do we have any speakers tonight?
Just one off-air.
One off-air. Okay.
We'll address the off-air portion later, and we can proceed to item 9.1.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Dr. Brewer, now it's my turn. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-10.1 through C-23.1, with the exceptions of items D-26.1, D-26.2, D-26.3, D-26.4, D-26.5, D-26.6, D-26.7, D-26.8, D-26.9, D-26.10, D-26.11, D-26.12, D-26.13, D-26.14, D-26.15, D-26.16, D-26.17, D-26.18, and D-26.19 that have been pulled and placed under discussion regular agenda items. Also, items D-27.1 and C-22.2 that have been pulled and placed under discussion pulled agenda items. May I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Second. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May 28, 2025. Ms. Martinez-Yong, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, Madam Chair, one off-air.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-25-303E, JD-25-310, JD-25-311, JD-25-313E, JD-25-314, JD-25-315, JD-25-316, JD-25-317, JD-25-318, JD-25-323, JD-25-324, JD-25-325, for the remainder of the '24-'25 school year and the entire '25-'26 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
First inquire, the one that is a...
Off-air.
Off-air. Is that included within this ones that we're voting on now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's pull that separately and address it off-air.
They did not complete the necessary documentation to dispute the consequences or the facts of the case.
I understand. They don't need to dispute the consequences, but we still need to address it separately. We don't know what's going to come up. So, let's, can you please state which item that is?
JD number.
JD number.
It will take me a few minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I would prefer the board not vote on that item unless and until it's been addressed. Though the board may choose not to respond, I think the board needs to still, if there's someone to speak on that item, it's appropriate for the board to have heard it prior to voting on it.
It'll be JD-25-322E.
Okay. So, the motion will regard everything except for JD...
It's not in this motion.
Okay, it's not in this motion?
Correct.
Okay.
What is the number again, Dr. Brewer?
JD-25-322E.
Okay, so the motion remains undisturbed?
Yes.
As stated. So, there's been a motion and a second?
Yes, we have a motion by Dr. James, a second by Dr. Campbell, and that student number is not included in that. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Attorney Powers, would it be best when I make this motion to leave, just leave that student number out for this next item? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-25-309, JD-25-321, with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the '24-'25 and the entire '25-'26 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the modification of expulsion duration for JD-25-015? This is to modify the expulsion duration for student JD-25-015.
Motion to approve.
Oh, there's, I have, sorry, Dr. Campbell, I have a whole thing I have to read here. I apologize. I did pause there. Student JD-25-015 was previously expelled by the MCPS School Board for the remainder of the '24-'25 school year and the first quarter of the '25-'26 school year, based on reciprocity of an approved expulsion from Hillsborough County Public Schools. Upon further review of the student's file, it was discovered that the original Hillsborough County expulsion duration was for the remainder of the '23-'24 school year and the entire '24-'25 school year, with an eligibility to return to base school date on August of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll now move on to discussion regular agenda items. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment with Cambridge Assessment International Education? May I have a motion? Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Brewer, you have some information you'd like to share with us regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Connor will provide remarks tonight in response to the request to approve the Second Amendment with Cambridge Assessment International Education.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, board members, and interim superintendent Dr. Brewer. The Second Amendment between Marion County Public Schools and Cambridge Assessment International Education increases the total contract amount to $7.5 million over three years, with a maximum of $2.5 million per year, ending June 30, 2028. There are a couple key highlights that I would like to point out. I want to clarify that these funds are earned by students who have passed exams and earned diplomas. This expands the Cambridge Program Support at seven high schools and six elementary and middle schools, enhancing access to college credit and rigorous academic coursework. Students can also qualify for Bright Future scholarships through ACE diploma and community service. And it includes an updated data-sharing agreement aligned with technology requirements and increased cyber liability insurance. This investment directly benefits students and staff while maintaining responsible fiscal planning by leveraging performance-based funding. That concludes my summary statement.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. For, oh, Dr. Brewer, do you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. For, do I open it up for any discussion? Okay, all right. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the grant application Perkins v. Secondary?
No move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Dr. Brewer, you have some information regarding this item for us?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kathy Audi will provide a recap of how the Perkins v. Secondary grant is utilized in Marion County public schools.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, School Board members, and superintendent Dr. Brewer. The Carl D. Perkins Grant is an annual entitlement grant in which, for the '25-'26 school year, we will be receiving $819,905. This grant is used annually to fund specific things. One of those, some of those items are travel and substitute expenditures for our teachers traveling with students to competitions such as HOSA and FFA competitions. We also use funding in this grant for teacher trainings and professional development. We use it to upgrade equipment in our CTE programs and for consumable items such as in our culinary programs. We also fund one CTE instructional support unit through this grant. This position oversees all of our college program articulations, as well as new teacher support. Some of the equipment upgrades we're planning to make this school year through this grant is replacing all of the hospital beds and mannequins in some of our health programs, new tractors and mowers for some of our agriculture programs, automotive equipment such as tire changers for Vanguard High School, and EKG simulators for all of our electrocardiograph technician programs. This grant allows us to keep our CTE programs up to date every year.
Right. Thank you. Board, any concerns or discussion? Oh, Ms. Thrower.
It's not a concern. Thank you. Good evening. It's just a question on the effect of, the effect of the action. It states that parents will be informed of the options supported through the grant, which is great, and will be encouraged to assist their children in making informed decisions about course offerings. And I know this is important, and I was just wondering how that parent notification would occur.
Yeah, so we do a few different things through this. We always have our CTE website up to date. We also do annual postings for both nondiscrimination and what course offerings are at of all of the high schools and all of the middle schools annually, and we publish a newspaper as well for that. As part of the Perkins Grant, we also do a mailing to all students who have qualified for articulated credits, so that goes mailed to the home of the students as well. And we also use this grant to support the creation of the new high school catalog that will hopefully be ready soon.
Awesome. That's, that's great, because it's just such a, so many wonderful opportunities for students, and just making sure that the parents know about it is everything. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Audi, for being with us this evening. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment with Skyward Incorporated?
No move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Brewer, you have some information on this item for us?
Yes, Mr. Ben Vinudy will share an update, or really, an overview of Skyward and the purpose of Skyward and the, explain the request to approve the Second Amendment.
Good evening, Board Chair Conrad, Dr. Brewer, sorry, Superintendent Dr. Brewer, and board members. The Technology and Information Division is requesting permission to renew the agreement with Skyward for a total of $735,000. Skyward provides the district with business and student management suites. It is currently the district's best solution for these tools, as it offers an integrated platform that manages our student information system and our enterprise resource planning system. This integration ensures that our HR, finance, payroll, student records, and scheduling operate within one single system. As a result, we experience fewer errors, enhanced data accuracy, and streamlined operation... As a result, we experience fewer errors, enhanced data accuracy, and streamlined operations across all departments. Skyward is designed to efficiently manage high user volumes and substantial data sets. We do not encounter the slowdowns or instabilities associated with less sophisticated platforms. Additionally, the customization options are extensive. We can adjust dashboards, workflows, and reports to align to our district-specific requirements without relying on third, heavily on third-party solutions. Role-based access is also enables us to manage visibility, which is crucial for privacy and operational efficiency. Skyward remains proactive regarding state reporting and compliance. We observe their prompt, their promptness with responses to legislative changes, which conserves our time and minimizes errors in reporting. The support and training provided for, by Skyward are also exceptional. Ultimately, there are no systems, sorry, while no systems come cheap, Skyward demonstrates long-term cost-effectiveness. Uh, being an all-in-one solution allows us to avoid any additional expenses associated with integrating multiple systems.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Vinudy. Board, any questions or discussion? Yes, Dr. Campbell?
It's not necessarily a question as much as it is just kind of a statement and a thought. I, I know that Skyward does a lot of great things, but there's also, the way we had it originally designed also causes us some challenges with, um, how, how close are we to coming up with additional strategies to get us to, uh, hyper-efficiency? I, and I'm speaking specifically like business office functions and, and things like that, how, um, we continue to have to use Excel spreadsheets and all in, in finance and, and there are reports, I know that other districts are able to generate and have, uh, those kinds of, I, I think you're catching on to my train of...
I am, um, I came from a large district originally.
Thank you.
It was a very large district. There are larger systems that are out there, but they're very, very costly systems. So, we would have to do some investigation, and we can, it's just understanding that there is a large cost to those kinds of systems that have those types of functionality. For example, I don't, I don't want to say a specific tool. Miami-Dade's tool was a very large tool, and that cost upwards of eighty million dollars to deploy. So we've, we've got to keep those things in mind, but we can look at possible solutions, where are there situations that staff needs better augmentation? We have a, a staff that can do, create applications and reports, so maybe there's other ways that we can augment those to better improve our processes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ben Vinudy. Anyone else? Okay. All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Ben Vinudy. May I have a motion to approve the special data share agreement with NH, HMH Education Company?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Uh, thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Brewer, you have some information regarding this item?
Yes, I'm gonna ask, um, Mrs. Deborah Riedel to come to the podium, she will provide remarks, um, in regards to the HMH Special Data Share Agreement.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
The Special Data Share Agreement with HMH Education will allow our district to purchase resources and professional learning for schools such as Read 180 and Math 180. Read 180 is our primary reading intervention program for grades four and five ELA and grade six through nine ELA. Designed to support a multi-tiered system of supports framework, Read 180 integrates adaptive technology, scaffolded support, and evidence-based instructional practices aligned with the science of reading. Math 180 is the primary math intervention for grades six through nine, six through eight, designed to build algebra readiness and accelerate progress toward grade level proficiency. It supports an MTSS framework by combining personalized software with teacher-led instruction using research-based strategies tailored to the needs of striving students. This purchase includes digital licenses, student and teacher books, and teacher training totaling seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents, leaving approximately two hundred thousand for schools who wish to purchase from this vendor as well.
Thank you, Ms. Riedel. Board, any, um, questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Riedel. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreements with occupational therapists?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Brewer, you have some information you'd like to share with us?
Yes, I have asked Ms. Williams Jones to provide a summary of all of the six next items, um, in one presentation, and then I, we do realize that you have to vote individually, but if you would allow her to provide the summary of all six while she's at the podium, we'd appreciate it.
Right, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Conrad, Superintendent Dr. Brewer, and Board Members. The items that I'm gonna cover for you are items D twenty-six point five through D twenty-six point ten, and these are related services agency contracts. So, the first one is the contract agreement, uh, with fourteen independent occupational therapist contracts at a cost of one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents. The second item is the independent interpreter contracts with five agencies at a cost of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. The third item is the independent contract with Oasis Occupational Therapy LLC at a cost of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. The next item is an independent agreement with Talk of the Town Therapy at a cost of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. The next item is a contract with the Stepping Stones Group at a cost of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And the final item is a co, a contract with Florida Visually Impaired and Blind Services at a cost of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. The approval of these contracts supports the students with disabilities and their ability to participate in the general education curriculum, meet their annual educational goals, and take part in extracurricular and non-academic activities.
Thank you very much. Board, any, um, comments, questions, concerns? Yes, Ms. Thrower?
I'll just say, you know, thank you for coming forward, uh, the last couple of years and just sharing, these are typical expenses, because we need to serve each and every student to the best of our ability, but the tag is, is high, you know, just quick math, close to three million dollars, and so, as I continue to get asked, why is public education becoming more and more expensive? Well, we have a lot of priorities and mandates and things that are the right thing to do, so, even though we don't discuss them very much because we're familiar with them, thank you for taking the time to, to share so the community's more aware.
Thank you.
Okay. I too just would like to say thank you, um, again, just reiterating what Board Member Thrower said, we, those of us in education know that these services are provided on a regular basis, um, you know, daily for some, some students, and so, just want to thank you, uh, for your work in this area and providing an overview for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreements with Sign Language Interpreter, whoop, whoop, hold on just one second? Okay, that's correct. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreements with Sign Language interpreters?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Oasis OT LLC? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower, thank you, Reverend Cummings, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Talk of the Town Speech Therapy LLC? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, thank you, Board Member Thrower. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with the Stepping Stones Group LLC? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Florida Visually Impaired and Blind Services LLC?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Motion passes, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the K, K through twelve district comprehensive evidence-based reading plan?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Second? Dr. Campbell, was that you?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, a second by Dr. Campbell. Dr. Brewer, you have some information you'd like to share with us regarding this item?
Yes, um, Ms. Riedel is returning to the podium, she will share an overview of our K-12 reading plan.
Thank you, hello again, Ms. Riedel.
Each year, school districts across Florida must develop a comprehensive evidence-based reading plan that outlines the components of the district's comprehensive system of reading instruction. The plan serves as a detailed roadmap describing how district and school-level leadership, professional development, assessments, and curriculum all work together to improve student achievement in English Language Arts based on the best standards. This plan includes strategies and expectations across all grade levels and schools and is shared with all stakeholders, including school administrators, teachers, and families. The reading funding included in the Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP, base funding is intended to provide comprehensive reading instruction to students in grades pre-K through grade twelve.
Thank you, Ms. Riedel. Board, any comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Riedel. May I have a motion to approve the general insur, insurance package for July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six? May, may, thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Um, Dr. Brewer, you have some information for us regarding this item?
Yes, Ms. Boston Ellis is here to provide additional information, but this is content that you did, um, that was presented at our last work session, but Ms. Boston Ellis is here to provide additional information if needed.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brewer. Hello, Ms. Boston Ellis, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. Chair Conrad, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Brewer. Uh, as, as Dr. Brewer stated, MCPS is self-funded for general insurance. Our total insured value is over one point three billion dollars. The general insurance package is basically the premiums that we will pay for the year two thousand twenty-five through, uh, June two thousand twenty-six, provide coverage for property, terrorism, boiler and machinery, auto, general liability, excess, workers' compensation, school board errors and omissions, fiduciary and cyber liability, active assailant and crime. As Dr. Brewer stated, a very detailed review of our coverages were provided by our consultants, Ben Few and company, and based on their analysis, recommended premiums are as follows: For property, two point three million, this is a decrease of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand over the prior year. For casualty, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, this is an increase of about forty-four thousand over the prior year. So the net premium is a decrease of a hundred and forty-five thousand for property and casualty. In addition, they recommended that the loss fund replenishment should be about one point one million, which is an increase of about three hundred and forty-seven thousand over the prior year, and this is to meet the actuary funding requirements. So in summary, the total estimated premium is four point one million, that it includes the loss fund, and this is an increase over the prior year, which was three point nine million, of about two hundred and three thousand. They also recommended that we engage an appraisal company for a complete replacement cost appraisal of our property portfolio, which will, uh, the timing is great because we are building two new schools, so it is an appropriate time to do that appraisal, and we'll begin working on that once this is approved by the board.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Board, do you have any questions or concerns? Yes, Dr. James?
My, my only question or concern would be the cost of getting an appraisal for all of our property. Um, it's, uh, appraisal's not inexpensive, and we have a lot of property, uh, and a lot of buildings, so, um, I think as we're looking at numbers and costs of things, I, this board member would want to understand the financial implications for having an appraisal for all of the things we own, uh, before we just move forward. Uh, I think we need to at least understand that.
Absolutely. Uh, this will be handled, uh, just like most of the other things we do, um, if it's over the threshold of fifty thousand, it would be brought to you to vote, and also we would, uh, provide, uh, where that recommendation comes from, because I believe Mr. Few said that we, we hadn't done it in a long time, and it was, this is an appropriate time to do that, but we will bring that to you.
Yeah, and I don't disagree it's an appropriate time, I think we just need to understand the, the cost, and, you know, are we gonna appraise everything, even things that we're very underutilizing or not utilizing at all, um, and so, understanding that we have property that, and buildings that are sitting vacant, so, you know, are we needing to have a grap, a, a grasp on all of that? So, those are just the questions I'll have as we move forward.
We'll do, we'll, we'll get on that.
Thank you, Dr. James. Yes, Ms. Thrower?
Thank you, and, uh, I look forward to the comprehensive review and also, uh, a recommendation as to how often, um, this should be done. It, it caught my attention when Mr. Few shared that this hadn't been done in, in many, many years, and to me, it's something that, that we want to keep up with, and the board needs to be kept abreast of, and with all that, uh, property and, uh, to appraise, uh, by the time we really get going on this, the two new schools will likely be open, but a third one close behind, so we might as well get that one in there too, depending on the timing of, of how quickly this is able to be accomplished, so, thank you.
We'll bring back additional information before we move forward.
Right. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
You don't have to answer anything for me, Ms. Boston Ellis, but thank you, I wanted to first say thank you for your leadership on this, and you are the reason, you are per, one of the primary reasons that we are in a self-insured scenario, which saves this district hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars a year, so, super grateful, um, for your leadership helping us get there. I too am looking forward to appraisals, you know, it's one of the things, I understand there's a cost to that, but when you are self-insured, you don't actually know how much you need unless there is a tragedy, and we all found that whenever the tech services building did catch fire in the middle of the night, um, so that was several years ago, obviously, but it took us all off guard, and it wasn't something we had an appraisal on. It wasn't, we didn't know how much we needed to be insured for that specific building. It's just good business sense to understand what we have and what we need to have in our reserve fund, potentially, I'm using that term, reserve fund, you know what the extra fund is that we tried to have, uh, but what we need to have not just in our self-insurance fund, but also on hand should there be something else that happens, and so, uh, certainly, insurance is for a purpose, and we understand that in some cases, you always have to have insurance, car insurance and, and all those kinds of things, you, you really have to have insurance, but in this particular scenario, whenever we're the ones footing the bill, I would feel very comfortable in knowing exactly how much we need to have in the event of a situation that we are all unexpecting, not expecting, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Anything else? Okay, seeing none. Um, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Davies Claims North America Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Brewer? Do you have some information for us?
Miss Boston Ellis didn't go far, she's going to share additional information on this agreement.
It's, this is under the umbrella of risk management. By approving this agreement, the district will continue to have a third-party claims the district will continue to have a third-party claims administrator services to manage the district's self-insured exposure and associated claims. And again, it includes all the general auto employment liability, workers' comp, property errors and omissions, boilers and machinery, and this is done in accordance with Florida statute. The Risk Management Department requests permission to approve this third-party claims administrator, Davy Claims North America, and we know him as John Eastern. This agreement will begin July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028, with an option to renew for two one-year renewal periods. The total amount of the full term of five years would not exceed $1.3 million. The services for the initial three years, $250,000 for year one, $255,000 for year two, $265,000 for year three, not to exceed a total of $770,000. And the cost of the first option renewal will be approximately $276,000, and the second optional year will be $284,000. The total for the full term, as I stated earlier, would be about $1.3 million. And this is our third-party administrator, and they handle all of those items that I spoke of previously.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Anything else? Board, comments, concerns? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the agreement for DOCSA Accident and Health Insurance LLC?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Brewer?
Thank you. I've asked Donnie Tucker, the coordinator of athletics and activities, to actually highlight the benefits of this agreement for our student athletes this evening.
Hello, Mr. Tucker.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, board members, interim superintendent, Dr. Brewer. So this, this agreement with DOCSA, it's, that's the provider for this, this particular insurance policy, and it covers all of our student athletes. And included in this is also a, an all-student policy that covers all of our students pre-K through twelve during the school day. It covers them in PE, recess, lunchtime. And there's also a part in here that covers JROTC students, participating in specific events during the school day on campus. So the, the total amount for the activities, the extracurricular activities and athletics part is $264,100. And then, the all-student policy that, that was created two years ago in 2023, and it is at a cost of $60,751, which equates to $1.37 per student that we have, based on 44,344 students in Marion County. So this is a great benefit to all of our student athletes and all of our students in Marion County. In addition to the all-student policy, parents also have an, an option to purchase a 24-hour coverage in addition to that. So this is a great, a great deal that, at what I consider kind of a small amount, considering the things that it covers. And it, and it covers all of our students, so that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Board, do you have any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. May I have a motion to approve the bid for 124AH Milk and Milk Products for Food Service Term Contract?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Thank you, Dr. James.
Yes, Ms. Ramona Belcher is here. She will actually provide information on the next two items.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, board members, and Dr. Brewer. This bid approval request has a significant price tag of over $3 million, highlighting the substantial amount of milk required to provide nutritious breakfast, lunch, and dinners to our students. The average cost for milk for these three meals per student is 81 cents. To put this into perspective, the average expenditure per day exceeds over $15,000. The approval of this bid is crucial for ensuring that our students receive the necessary nutrition throughout the day. For the food service large equipment, this aims to enhance our kitchens by providing essential new equipment designed to meet the growing meal demands for our students. This investment will allow us to efficiently prepare and serve nutritious meals, ensuring that we can accommodate larger quantities while maintaining quality and food safety standards. By upgrading our kitchen equipment, we also will improve our overall service delivery and operational efficiency, ultimately contributing to a better dining experience for our students. Next year, we do have several projects, including the installation of new serving lines at Bellevue High School, A Street, Fort King, Lakewood High, Oak Crest, Ocala Springs, and South Ocala. Additionally, many schools require the replacement of outdated equipment, such as combi ovens, convection ovens, reach-in coolers, and freezers. Our plan will focus on replacing equipment that is 20 years or older. The approval of the large equipment bid is vital for enhancing our kitchen facilities, ensuring that we can effectively meet the demands of our students.
Thank you very much, Ms. Belcher. Any questions or concerns from the board? Okay, all right. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the bid for 125AH Food Service Large Equipment Term Contract? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for current identified Tier Two comprehensive support in improvement schools between Marion County Public Schools and Marion Education Association for 2025-2026 school year?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Brewer?
Our executive director over human resources, Ms. Morant, is here to provide an overview of the MOU this evening.
Thank you, and good evening, Dr. Brewer, Chair Conrad, and board members. Item, this item is the memorandum of understanding for our current identified Tier Two comprehensive support and improvement schools, which is Oak Crest Elementary. And the MOU is between Marion County Public Schools and the Marion Education Association for the 2025-2026 school year. This MOU will allow instructional staff that are identified at this school to receive an additional supplement, up to $15,000 for those that are highly effective with a three-year aggregate state VAM, and $7,500 for those that receive effective with three-year aggregate state VAM. $5,000 for highly effective three-year aggregate student achievement ratings or local score, and $2,500 for those receiving effective. Any questions or additional information you would like me to share?
All right. Board? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Morant. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 school-based staffing ratios? Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Brewer?
Yes, as you recall, we have asked, we have asked the board for approval to reduce or to adjust our school-level staffing ratios based on the need from budget, for budget cuts. You last approved this plan in January, so this is a revised plan to address our budget cuts. And Ms. Morant is here to provide additional information.
So as discussed during the work session, we are requesting to update our school-based staffing ratios for the 25-26 school year. You'll see updates notated through, with our ESC department or staffing guidelines. Also, in elementary, middle, and high school, with a different, increase in the school-based ratio, so K through, K through third increasing to one to twenty, four and five, one to twenty-four, six through eight, one to twenty-four, nine to ten, one to twenty-seven. And then also, changing the ESOP paraprofessional guidelines and the bands that we will have one to fifteen for students in the same native language. Are there any additional questions, or any questions or additional information?
Thank you, Ms. Morant. Board? Dr. James?
I'll just say briefly, I think that this was a step that is going to put us in a position where we won't be in a position like other districts are in laying off a significant level of our workforce. And so, this is not the ideal next step, but I think it was the best way for us to approach the budget deficit that many public school districts across the state are facing, while still preserving the workforce that we have on our school sites. My goal as a board member would be to get in a position where we can get back to the standard class size ratios next school year. And I will be willing and able to problem-solve and be a brain to go towards trying to find a way financially to get us back to that and reallocating some units. I am looking forward to a scenario where we have all of our students in front of certified educators, and we do not have vacancies on our campuses, or very few. It's going to be a first in quite some time. While there are more students in classrooms, I do think the research supports that a few more students in a classroom is still better than in being in front of a non-certified educator or a substitute. And so, I'm grateful for that, and I, I think that we're, I'm proud of the work that we've done to do the best we can with the cards that we've been dealt, and I look forward to problem-solving how we can make improvements for next year.
May I add something?
Sure.
Just because you mentioned it. So, we went through the instructional placements, and I think we have two, three more, like little off ones. And then, same thing with the non-instructional. And so, we were able to transfer all of the folks that we had to move around. They were absorbed in vacancies for both instructional and non-instructional. And then, to the point that you made, right now, the majority of our schools are not sitting, they don't have any vacant positions in those basic units. So just wanted to tag on to what you, what you were saying or sharing.
Yes. And I'm grateful for that. I think that, I think we could have, we could have addressed this with our, with our executive leadership a variety of ways. We're watching it occur a variety of ways across the state. Even our neighboring districts are handling this differently. And I think that this was, this has been the best way to handle this for us and in our community. And I, I am hopeful that we'll continue to see improvements, not only for student achievement. I understand more students will be in classes, but I do believe that overall, students will have access to higher-quality learning this way. And we'll see how we can get those ratios back down next year.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you for the extra input, Ms. Morant. Ms. Thrower?
Thank you, and I know the community appreciates what board member James just shared. And I also look very much forward to working our way completely through this and getting back to a lower ratio. One of my reasons for that is because we do have our funding referendum, and one of the goals for that, as stated in the ballot language, was to help, you know, with, and meet the class-size amendment. Over the years, the requirements of that amendment have changed. According to my understanding, you know, it used to be classroom by classroom, then it went to school-wide. And there used to be fines associated with not meeting class size. I believe those have been repealed. So there's been some pretty significant changes through the years. And that being said, you know, we are in a statewide budget, you know, challenge right now. But I hope that as a board, we can keep this on the, the front burner, and as soon as we get a little bit more stable and solid on where we really are with our funding, that we can look at continuing to use the funding referendum dollars for one of those intentions, and there are several. This is just one of them. But I also understand that that referendum is, is finite. You know, it's every four years, and thank goodness to all of the voters, including the voters sitting up here, that it has, has passed three times in a row. But that's not a given. But it just kind of goes to, to show us as a community that there is a lot of needs and not enough money for everything we're trying to do to help each and every child succeed. So I'm going to be, you know, voting yes on this because it's the best way to navigate through for now, but I look forward to brighter days ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Morant. May I have a motion to approve professional services selection recommendation for architectural design services for continuing contracts fiscal year 2025 to 2026? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Brewer, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, we, we do not need to make remarks on this item, but we did pull this item in case any board member had any questions. Ms. Usher is available to answer if there were any questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Board, any questions or concerns on this item? Comments?
Okay. That's what we thought.
All right, that's what we were hoping for. All right. Thank you so much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to discussion-pulled agenda items. May I have a motion to approve the annual pre-qualification of contractors, general and building contractors for 2025-2026? May I have a motion? Thank you, Reverend Cummings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Campbell, I see that you pulled this item. Would you like to have further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Oh, okay. Want to oppose, so we have a three?
I'm sorry, is that an extension?
No, that was, that was board member Thrower.
That was a nay from you, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a three, a one, one. So, three for approval, one for recusal, and one denial. Okay. Do we need any more information on that? That's it? Okay, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the playground shade structure replacement at Hillcrest School, project 21-116? May I have a motion? Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Ms. Thrower, I see that you've pulled this item. Would you like to have further discussion?
Yes, yes, I look forward to getting more information on this. First of all, it was certainly the price tag that caught my attention initially. And then, also, I'd just like to get some more information, an overview of the timeline, and also, any necessary plans for reinstalling or replacing, if needed, the expensive therapy equipment that is located on this. It is, it's truly not a playground, but I'll hand it over to Ms. Usher.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Usher. I thought you escaped, but you didn't get to escape, so welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Yes, it is the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, for the shade structure at Hillcrest. This structure was destroyed in 2024 by Hurricane Helen. It is the shade structure that goes over the growth, motor, and sensory stimulation area. We got a GMP of 323,000, but we continue to work with the contractor to find ways to decrease this amount. We can do in sales tax savings in trying to, through design. And already, I've been talking to the contractor today, and I will, we, and the plan is to give us a credit back of $50,000 by using the same foundation footings. The canopy might have to be a bit larger, but it will allow us to save like $50,000. And we will continue to look at ways to improve it. For more technical detail, if anybody needs, the contractor representative is here tonight, Mr. Howard. The timeline is to have this project ready for the school year, and so it's a quick project, it's kind of rushed. The contractor in the interim is putting up a TARP for us because the principal informed us that she has summer school going on. So they're working on putting in something temporary for us to accommodate the students while we work on this very important project to get it done. We will submit for hurricane reimbursement, Mr. McFadden, but I do not know what will be the result, but we will try to get back some money. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Usher. Anything else? Board member Thrower?
I don't think so, and, and thank you to- And, and thank you to everyone who got a TARP, well, I don't even want to call it TARP, but some shading up quickly at the beginning of summer school. And a recent storm kind of shredded that. So it just goes to show how important it is, you know, to have the, the right equipment and then pray hard that we don't have another really bad hurricane. But thank you for, for bringing that forward. We have a lot of expenses and, and not a lot of money, but for something like this, we still want to be mindful of the expense while providing what kids require from their individual education plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Reverend Cummings.
Ms. Usher, thank you for including in your report that this was due to a hurricane and that we would be submitting for that. We don't know when we'll get the money, if we'll get the money, because we've applied for funds from hurricane situations. And I want the community to know, it's not an overnight process. Sometimes it takes years, and I do mean years, to get those funds refunded back to us. So it's a toss-up if we get it or not, but thank you for putting that in there.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Usher.
Thank you.
Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to committee reports and concerns, the next school board meeting is scheduled for July eighth, 2025, at 5:30 PM. There is a school capital outlay certex oversight committee meeting scheduled for July ninth, 2025, at 4:00 PM. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July seventeenth, 2025, at 9:00 AM. There is an independent citizens referendum oversight committee meeting scheduled for July seventeenth, 2025, at 4:00 PM. With that, we'll move on to board comments. Dr. Brewer?
Yes, thank you. I would like to let everyone know that we anticipate school grades being released in the next few days. We have to have those by the end of the day, Monday, June thirtieth. So we do anticipate being able to share that information with you all soon. We also, I want to let the community know that our district office will be closed next Thursday and Friday due to the holiday, but we will be open Monday through Wednesday of next week. And I'd like to recognize two people that I know Mr. Christian has already shared some media releases, but I'd like to congratulate Dr. Campbell. She was sworn in as the president-elect of the Florida School Board Association last week and will be, and will assume presidency the next July. So we are proud that she will represent Marion County Public Schools. Also, I'd like to recognize our Public Education Foundation Executive Director, Megan Magamal, was recognized as the inaugural winner of a Unbridled Spirit Award. And how the, how the director explained it today, we were in a meeting and she shared that this is for someone that continues to put on a great face and continues to do the hard work even when the foundation might be dealing with struggles or challenges with budget cuts or any other funding concern. So we're proud that she represents us as the Public Education Foundation. That's all my comments, Chair Conrad.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Ms. Martinez Young.
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Yes, ma'am. I need to seek the board's guidance on something. We have received additional information regarding the sale of the warehouse. I wanted to give you a review of where we have been in this process. The history begins back in November seventh, when we had a work session. Then November twelfth, when we had a board meeting. November twenty-first, we had another special board meeting on the topic. December tenth, we had another board meeting. And throughout all of these, we were discussing our plans and discussing also how to list it and how we would move forward. On March twenty-fifth, we had a board meeting in which we accepted an offer from one Remington, the buyer, for twenty twenty-four, for, sorry, for two-point-four million. At that time, they also requested a due diligence extension to May twenty-eighth. Then we had a meeting on May twenty-seventh, a board meeting, in which there was a second amendment, given an attempt to renegotiate from two-point-four down to two million. Then because of very delayed time and not enough public notice, we had a June tenth meeting. June tenth, we had a board meeting in which we discussed it and came up with a third amendment to discuss and extend to June thirtieth. So we accepted the reduced offer on the advice of council and outside council and discussion of the board and at that point extended it through to June thirtieth. We have received communication from the attorney for one Remington, who indicates now that they failed to order a survey. And as a result, they will not be able to close on the thirtieth. They instead requested they get another thirty days for, to complete their due diligence period. I indicated this was unacceptable, that the board had already been through enough and that we wished to move forward. I specifically, within our amendments, had included provisions, including a hard deposit, which meant that they would be on the hook for one-hundred-thousand-dollar deposit if they did not close on the thirtieth as promised. That is incorporated within the third amendment. They have now requested a fourth amendment because of the survey and have asked that if we can't do it for the thirtieth, that they be extended a fourth amendment, which would allow it to close on July eleventh. They have a surveyor they are actively working on to complete the due diligence that they need in order to finalize what they need for registration of the documents with the, with the tax collector. So they would now request that we extend, not for another thirty days, but we extend for eleven days beyond the planned closing on the thirtieth, which was Friday. They were going to engage in the, in the, sorry, they were going to close on Friday. Thirtieth would be Sunday or Monday. So they would like for eleven days beyond that to complete. Now, given the fact that this has gone through so many iterations, I've been through this up, down, left, and right. The board has right along with me. I believed it was appropriate not for me to make that decision to, that, well, another eleven days isn't going to hurt anything. Or frankly, at this point, given the way things are, I can't really tell what the plans may be because each time we've given, been given a little bit different information. Not casting aspersions on anyone, I simply want to say that I can't predict what actually happens for the next couple of weeks. When we get to the eleventh, if there's a survey, what happens then? All I can tell you is that because of our herd, our, our hard deposit, at this point, we're covered as to a hundred thousand dollars if the deposit. If they don't close at the time we say, then that's, that's a deposit that, that we get. Now, we also, of course, have the competing interests that we want the closure of the property to happen. We want that to be something that is smooth and it has not been a exactly smooth process from here. What I can say is that our options are these. We can assure the buyer that we are ready, willing, and able to close on June thirtieth. We can present them with the signed copies of the closing documents that have already been executed. If they fail to close on June thirtieth, they'd be in default of the contract. And at that point, the school board could either sign a fourth amendment, which would extend out to a July eleventh closing. That would require that the board give consensus for Ms. Conrad to sign that fourth amendment. As discussed, then we wouldn't have to place it on a board meeting agenda if we did it that way. Otherwise, we can demand the cure, buyer cure their defect by closing under the terms. We can also simply reject the offer and say, at that point, if they don't close under those terms, then, you know, we take the deposit and, and we retain the property, relist later, you know, review our decisions as to how we do that. It is difficult to give the board a consistent evaluation of what my recommendation would be because each time these things happen, there's been a little bit different information that I'm not privy to as to where they are in the process. I can tell you, it's very disappointing that we get to the point where we're literally about to close after we've extended this number of times and run into the fact that a survey wasn't ordered, despite the fact that we've extended due diligence. However, is it worth another eleven days to just make it all done? It may well be. So those are factors that I believe, I don't want to invade the province of the board to make that decision. So I wanted to bring it to your attention. If the board chooses to allow that to give consensus for us to sign that fourth amendment, I'll do so. Have it executed and we'll be done with it before the board meets again. On the other hand, if the board chooses to say that they're, just want to retain the deposit and force them to close on the thirtieth, then I will so order that. But I needed to have the board at least have some discussion about it. I don't want to come down hard in one direction or the other, but I do believe that we've, I've made my point quite known to the attorney for the, for one Remington, that this needs to have, it, it shouldn't have gotten where it is and that we weren't going to give another thirty-day extension. Realistically, they indicate they can do it by the eleventh. I can't promise you that we get there and we don't have another request because that's already happened twice. But that's the history and I just want to give the board the opportunity during my comment period to discuss. I would obviously have made it an agenda item and brought it up, but there was very little notice that I had for this, so.
All right. Thank you. Board, go ahead, Dr. James.
I just have a clarifying question. Legally, can they close without a survey?
Yes, they can. However, it makes things more difficult for them because without the survey, they can't record the document at the same time that they're, that they're doing it. So it would be unwise of them to do so. And I would, if I were their attorney, I would say that's not a good thing to do. You really need to hurry up on the survey as quickly as you can. That may be exactly why we are where we are. A survey should have been ordered. The due diligence period was certainly long enough. Somebody dropped the ball. That being said, in working with a business partner, I do wish to try to accommodate those factors. It's just we've had a number of accommodations and we also have had a, we've even accommodated a significant drop in the, in the offer, so.
Okay. So to, to close my comments, in reflecting back, the second highest offer we have ever gotten on this was one-point-four from a local person. And we rejected that because it was not within the appraisal range.
That's correct.
Which was our reason publicly. And so at this point, I think, I, I do believe we should give them the eleven days and get this across the finish line because we are not going to get better than this. That was evident by the offers we received. And I, I, it's incredibly frustrating. I totally agree. I think maybe we've picked up some lessons learned collectively as we enter into other property sales. But I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater just yet. And I would like to personally give them the eleven days. That's their time to do the survey and, and we get it done. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Campbell, where do you stand?
So I, I'm standing in the position of grace a bit. And, and here's the justification in my thought process. I, I was just about to see if this is their first dealing in the state of Florida. So they, it's what I was just about to pull up and, and see. I understand there are, in, in the conversation we just had last Thursday about potential development occurring from Texas to Florida, we know there are differences in laws there and, and all of those things. And so I, I want to offer a little bit of grace if this is their first business venture in the state of Florida coming out of New York. There could be some thoughts on that. Also, this may be the first time they've ever purchased a piece of government land. And so I could see the value in having a survey because all of a sudden you're going to the tax collector's roles because you're a business entity as opposed to it always being government. So I, I see all of those reasons. I don't like it. And, and I think that we can chalk it up to lessons learned of, of things that we need to ensure on our side if we do have an out-of-town purchaser of anything in the future, almost that we have a checklist that we're like, by the way, do you guys know what you're doing on all of these things? And I, that would just kind of overkill, but we've seen the challenges that we're experiencing with this particular sale. I'm grateful that we do have a hundred thousand dollars that is non-refundable. So we know that we're at least, that they're on the hook for something. Eleven days is eleven days. We do have an Independence Day holiday in the middle of all of that. And so the week of June thirtieth is already a challenging week, so I can respect that getting something done in a very short period of time when someone dropped the ball, doing it during the holiday week is presenting even more of a challenge. So that's my rationale for saying grace for another eleven days, but after that, no more. July eleventh will be the end of the straw for Board Member Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board Member Thrower?
Fisher Cup bait is where I'm at. And if we're going to agree to extend this out another eleven days, then I would like to see something in writing that says that they will have that completed. There will be no further negotiation on price. And if they don't close, then they're out there a hundred grand. And like I've said from the beginning, you know, that building is probably about as depreciated as it's going to get without it just falling inwards and the land ain't going anywhere. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
My, my initial thoughts were that this is a, a company that does this for business and that they, this is not their first rodeo. And that they know the procedures, the, the things needed to purchase property, whether it's in Florida, Texas, or wherever. It came out of New York and a little bit of research on that company. This is definitely not their first purchase of land. I do think it's a learning lesson for us as a board that do, we do need to put some, something together, a checklist or something so that we are not the ones that are continuing to accommodate these types of situations. I, I can understand, I don't even want to call it grace. I don't even call it grace. That's too kind to call it grace, to be honest with you. We're just giving them the eleven days. And, but I, this board member from this seat would not be willing to go to a fifth amendment or a sixth amendment if they're not ready to. I can't say what I want to say because there's, 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 there's a, there's a saying that, that, that says you need to do what you need to do or get off the pot. I think y'all understand that very well. And they need to do what they need to do or get off the pot. So that's where I'm at with this. So we can go to the eleventh.
And I, I am in agreeance. I stand right where the rest of our fellow board members are. I feel very frustrated and that we've worked very hard to get to this point. But eleven more days. We'll give you eleven more days.
And I think we need to give the chair the leeway to do what she needs to do.
Oh, I, I thought he was going to say a bonus for going down there fourteen times.
No, ma'am. The, the leeway to do what she needs to do is without bringing it back to us.
Right. And, and I will say that I don't think there needs to be language indicating that we're not going to, that we've already, I've put language in there already indicating that the hundred thousand dollar deposit is, is non-refundable, that they're aware of that. It's already in escrow. I mean, our outside council has that and is retaining it. At that point, if they don't close by that date, whatever happens, come heck or high water, they're, they're, they're stuck. So that's the date that they, that, that we've gotten. We've drafted a, just in anticipation, drafted a fourth amendment that extends it for that eleven-day duration. And then from there, if, if it doesn't happen, then, then it's rejected essentially. At that point, we're done.
Okay. Yes, Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. And I think the reason, the only reason why we've hung in there this long is because it was a really good offer. Well, that offer then got less good. And, and my concern is, is that if we don't make it very clear, this is the end. And that's it. So is that something we need to put in writing, that we will agree to the July eleventh closing date? But it's best combined?
I'll make it clear, I'll make it clear to council for one Remington that, and I'll make it clear through, through John and Alex as well, that these are, there's not going to be an additional negotiation. However, if they come back and say, well, we found something on the survey, we want to alter the price, I will tell them that's not, that is an extremely unlikely occurrence and I don't want to bring it back to the board. But I will make sure that I reflect to the board, reflect to my client, whatever it is that they might say, but they, I will make very sure that they are aware that this is the grace that's being extended and that is simply to close. That's all.
Thank you. And here is my thought. Because a gavel in real estate, a survey, basic. Come on. We extended the due diligence period by a Come on. We extended the due diligence period by a lot.
Well, if I can, Chair, Attorney Powers, what I hear the board, I think, all agreeing to is this is our best and final. We're done. Don't bring it back to us. We're either going to close by the 11th or we're going to get $100,000 and we're going to button it up. And so I guess Chair, I've been taking the liberty, is the whole board in consensus that this is our best and final and we're ready to close the chapter. Because I can agree to that. I hear Ms. Thrower saying that. I hear Reverend Cummings saying that. So I think if-
Certainty gives me the plausibility of not having to bring it back to you.
Correct. So I think that's what I hear you looking for. I can say that this is our best and final, maybe.
The only way I would agree.
Absolutely. I could save this for another time, but I just find it interesting. In the research I'm doing, this isn't their first time. They've asked a governmental entity for an extension. They continue to do this in New York even. I can't see that they've done it in Florida. I can't see that they've had purchases in the state, but this kind of seems to be modus operandi. So I think that we-
Yeah, this is our best and final.
-give it till July 11th, then done deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Attorney Powers, anything else you need to share with us?
If there is, it has escaped my mind at the moment, so I think I don't have anything else right now. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Dr. James?
Thank you. Just real quick, I don't have much. I had brought up regarding our FSBA membership, specifically my membership in that professional organization in my comments on Thursday, I believe. So I just wanted to kind of summarize where we were as a board and what my request was. I didn't know if there was anything else formal needed from me. I got an updated invoice from Ms. Martinez Young with my name removed, so I just wanted to make sure there was nothing else needed from me, from the board. And other than that, I'm good to go. No further comments.
Thank you Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
No comments tonight.
Alright, thank you. Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. Yes, just a couple of things. First of all, I believe this is our last meeting before we celebrate Independence Day, so hopefully everyone is really going to have a joyful time celebrating a very important holiday and I look forward to doing the same. Tonight on the consent agenda, I believe it was 11.3, we voted and approved Project Lead the Way, which is CTE, Career and Technical Education. It's something very near and dear to my heart. I love seeing the downreach into middle and even into elementary school. This particular $150,000 item is to really help that bridge from middle to high school. So I could not be more excited for the continuing emphasis on career and technical education. You know, the two are not mutually exclusive. You're not either college-bound or trade school-bound. There's so many ways to blend those if a student and family chooses to and not have it break your own personal bank. So I was just really excited to see that on there. We did have a presentation this week at our work session from upward communities. I think that it's always important when there's an opportunity with, to look at ways to stabilize our workforce. You know, 17% turnover was quoted. I think that the community really needs more information on how this is, would potentially be structured and what our lack of financial involvement in this and lack of being a landlord really is. Because certainly, as I think we all said at the work session, if we could just increase everybody's pay 20%, you know, that would have been done a long time ago. So this is looking for creative ways in the times that we are in with the challenges to public education to try to provide opportunities for employees to make it more affordable, literally to remain working in public education, no matter what. You know, this isn't just for teachers. So I just think that as we move forward with this, if we decide to ultimately, it's going to be important to really explain to the community what it means and what it doesn't mean. And I was serious. I fully intend to be visiting Hayes County, Texas on my own dime in the future and watching the development of that and getting a chance to, you know, be boots on the ground and see it. It's an interest of mine anyway. Texas is a big state. It's like a country. So it's further from my sister in Dallas than I thought, but that's okay. It's a car drive away. I was also glad to see the Marion Charter School contract renewed. They've been such a great partner of ours through the years, so congratulations to them. And as far as the FSBA membership goes, after a conversation with Andrea Messina, the, is she president? Yes, CEO. I know it wasn't president. That's going to be you. CEO that I was reflecting back that we have had board members in the past that haven't participated and we've been able to adjust the cost accordingly. So I continue to think that it's valuable and I think this board has done a great job adjusting. You know, some of us have just driven down for the day. Some of us have stayed longer because they're in leadership positions. So I feel really good about the return on investment that FSBA gives us. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thrower. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. I wanted to start this evening by saying thoughts and prayers are with the North Marion student's family who tragically lost his life over the weekend. That just makes me want to say, students, please be careful. Please be careful in the summer. There was another student that wasn't a Marion County Public School student, but another student in central Florida that also lost their life recently. And there's just a lot of opportunity for accidents to happen. And so just please be careful, especially as we head into the holiday weekend this next week, celebrating Independence Day. Also wanted to note, tonight in the consent agenda, we also approved a special data share agreement with United Way of Marion County for their Reading Pals program. Thank you Jan for being in the audience this evening as I've seen you. Reading Pals program is a fabulous program operating in our elementary schools through volunteers, through the United Way. And just super grateful for the opportunities that they have to be in our classrooms, but also for the impact it has on literacy for our youngest learners. So thank you and thank you Board for approving that this evening. The last two items I have, and Chair, it's probably on your list because I talked about it on Thursday, but we do need to choose an advocacy liaison representative for the Florida School Boards Association. So it will have to be out of the members of FSBA certainly. And then also, the certified school board member status is only eligible for members of FSBA. So I know you just received that, but potentially that, since you indicated you're no longer going to be a member, I think that'll be something that you won't be able to carry on with you. But the last thing that I wanted to also mention is July 8th meeting. I will be participating telephonically, so I'll make sure I work with Mr. Christian and his team on that particular board meeting date. But I intend to be here, but not be here. So wanted to make that public notice available. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you Dr. Campbell. Board, we'll start with going into Dr. Campbell's comments. We do need a representative for the advocacy committee. So it would have to be Reverend Cummings or Board Member Thrower.
And we'll have to have a member and an alternate. So one of you be the member and one of you be the alternate.
So I don't know. I open that up for any discussion or-
Okay. Board Member Cummings, what would be your fancy? I think it's probably the two of us, although Chair Conrad, what's your thought?
On the advocacy committee? Yes. I think you two have got to weigh in on what position you want to take so we can submit that because it is due by, let's see, the end of the month? Because you kick off in the beginning of August, correct? That committee starts in the beginning of August. Right.
I wasn't sure if you were, you know, I know you have your hands full being Chair.
I do, yes, yes. And I am also going to take just a year's leave from FSBA while we're doing some budget that was in discussion last Thursday. I do think it's valuable. I just think as we're, each department is cutting, I think it's my responsibility to do some cutting too. So I just, I need to make sure we've got that covered if you all are able to do it. Reverend Cummings, nodding his head. So would you like to serve on the advocacy?
That's fine.
Okay. Reverend Cummings, and you will be the alternate?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Campbell, we're all set on that. Alright, thank you Board. That was fairly easy. I, most of my fellow board members have covered a lot of what I wanted to just mention this evening, so I'll just hit the few that are left. One, I want to say a thank you ahead of time. Our warehouse team is doing some moving tomorrow. And so it's a lot of work and it's hot outside. So I just want to say thank you to the warehouse team as they do some movement tomorrow, getting everybody where they need to be in their new placement. And so just wanted to give them a shout out for that. I also wanted to do a plug for the Public Ed Foundation. We did have a strategic planning session this morning and they too, as Dr. Brewer mentioned, are facing some funding challenges. So if you are interested in doing a payroll deduction, I know that, all of you know, we're talking about how well and how much the Public Ed Foundation serves not just the students of Marion Counties, but the staff and the district as a whole. So if that's something that you've thought about and just haven't signed up to do it, I just wanted to provide a little encouragement. I really value the work that they do each and every day for our district. So just a plug for that. Dr. Brewer, I was just wondering in the near future if we could get a summer school update. I think it's going to be winding up soon.
Yes, we have one scheduled at the beginning of August.
Perfect. Alright, thank you very much. And then I did want to say, we were able to celebrate a graduation at Acceleration Academy and it was really special. And again, it reminded, I know I said it earlier today, we serve every student and we do our best to serve every student. And it was a great reminder of the challenges. A young lady gave a speech opening up the beginning of graduation and she reminded me personally that there are challenges our students face that as an adult I have not had to face. And so just really grateful for the work that is done. I believe we had 32 or 34 graduates at the Acceleration Academy. I just wanted to say thank you for the work because we were there to celebrate and be part of the ceremony, but the work that happens every day is hard, you know, working to help all of those kids get what they need to succeed. And then lastly, last, the end of last week, we participated in a internet expansion celebration with Spectrum. And it was great. We're super excited. You know, we were talking about how much school has changed since particularly I was in school. And so, you know, if the internet's down or you don't have a good connection, how that really hinders the work that goes on every day at school. And so we're just really to, glad to be included and be a part of that celebration because it is impactful for our students in our schools and our teachers, everyone. So just really glad to be included in that. Board, with that, that concludes my comments. And if there's no further business, we will go into recess at 7:20 for an off-air item. Thank you.